Good evening. We'd like to welcome everybody to our board meeting. We're seven o'clock on January 23rd, 2024. Call to order: Declaration of a Quorum. Six members present, one absent. Welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We are elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time, requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district. We thank you for your interest in and support of our students. That will bring us to item C, and I believe we have the kiddos from Greens Prairie and Rock Prairie, which is very special for me because my girls went to both of those.
Good evening. I'm Donna Barrington. I'm the principal at Greens Prairie Elementary, and I have two of our fourth graders here. This is Walt Parkinson, who's a fourth grade student, and his mom happens to be Tiffany over here. She works at Central Office. And then Levi Rhine, whose parents both work in our district. At one point in time, they both worked at Greens Prairie, which is pretty cool, I have to say. So I'm going to let them introduce themselves to you.
Hi, my name is Walt Parkinson, and my favorite subject is math.
Tell them about your belt buckle. You were going to show that.
And I show goats, and in my first show, I earned this.
Hi, my name is Levi, and my favorite subject is math.
Do you want to tell them what you like to do? Are your animals at home?
I like to play with my cat that I got for Christmas. She's very cute.
What's her name?
Her name's Clementine.
Very good.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Durell, the principal at Rock Prairie Elementary. I would be remiss if, like every morning on the announcements, we talk about birthdays that we have on our campus. I believe we have a birthday in the back row. Principal of Pebble Creek Elementary, Ms. Blair Grande, turning 25 tonight. Did I miss anyone else who's having a birthday today? I don't want to miss anyone. Okay, congratulations. All right, I have two amazing wranglers with me here tonight. I've got Cody Evans and Hadley Lipscomb. They've both been with us since kindergarten. I'm going to let them introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Cody Evans. I'm a fourth grader at Rock Prairie. My favorite thing about school is our kind teachers. Outside of school, I like to play soccer with my awesome friends. I'm most proud of learning to ride a dirt bike with a clutch. One thing that I would love to see in schools is longer recesses.
Hi, I'm Hadley, a fourth grader at Rock Prairie. My favorite thing about school is student council. Outside of school, I like to dance. I am most proud of being student council president. One thing I would love to see in schools is more kindness. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Wait a second.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one state indivisible.
Please join me in the moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated.
Okay, this is going to be my favorite part, too, because I would get to honor some staff members. So if you are part of Greens Prairie, come on up. Okay, I went to the dentist this afternoon, so my jaw is still kind of, but so please forgive me if, just know that. All right, I would like to introduce four of our staff members today. This is Sarah Rhine. You met her son. And I was thinking about why I selected these folks, and so I wanted to write down some things. So I didn't want to just go off the cuff, so if you will bear with me. So this is from a colleague of Sarah's, and so I asked her, what makes Sarah so special? And she captured her so well. She said, "I have worked with many talented teachers over the last 20-plus years of teaching, but Sarah Rhine may be the best of the best." I agree with that. "Her quiet and laid-back demeanor makes her easy to work with, and her compassion for others makes her coworkers feel valued and heard. That alone makes her a diamond in the rough." Quiet leader, I would say. But it is what she brings to a classroom that really shines. Sarah knows her content backwards and forwards. Most importantly, though, she knows her students. Each lesson she delivers has been carefully and thoughtfully designed to meet the needs of each and every student. Students are encouraged to make mistakes and try new things. They leave the classroom feeling confident and loved. Sarah is a gem." I agree with that wholeheartedly. It's good. Okay, this is Rousseau Coyne, and so Rousseau is special. She is the heart, has a heart for her students, along with high expectations and a focus on what they can do. She is a teacher and the backbone of our Life Skills SPED team. She is supporting a new fellow teacher, new paraprofessional staff, and mentoring a Texas A&amp;M resident student/teacher this year. She is busy growing new professionals in the SPED field, and she shares her expertise and passion among teachers and staff on our campus. As students move on to the next school, she still stays involved with their families. Through her work and passion, she has made lifelong connections with CSIC families. Okay, this is Ms. Tanya Moore, and Tanya, I'd like to share a little bit about her. I know when the lights are on, first thing in the morning, early, Tanya is busy preparing the office. I know it's going to be a great day. When the lights are not on, I know, oh, here we go. But so, it's special. When she is not there, get ready. Tanya is our day custodian. She is dependable and cares about her work. Through her quiet efforts, Tanya leaves her mark with special touches, such as making the first pot of coffee, which you know is important, for the staff. And knowing my office, this is a special touch. You know, the last week was so cold. Here she goes. Knowing my office gets about 50 degrees in the morning, on cold mornings, the last couple of days, she turns on my heater and closes the door so my office will stay warm for me. And that's so cool. She knows our students and keeps a watchful protective eye on our campus. We're so fortunate to have Tanya, and couldn't do it without her. And last but not least is Melissa Shanahan. She, if you want something done with accuracy and enthusiasm, you call on Melissa, and we call on her all the time. Melissa is our reading paraprofessional. She is always on the move, working with students, supporting teachers and students in the classroom, pitching in when extra hands are needed, and always, always with a willing heart and smile. Melissa is a valuable member of our specialist team serving our students, not only our students and our staff. Students experience daily successes moving towards their goals due to Melissa's efforts. And so I am so proud of these ladies, and I'm so glad they're part of our CSIC family. We're very fortunate to have them.
All right, I don't have notes, but that's okay. About to start singing, I guess. We bandy words like professionalism and accountability around a lot in this profession, but the three ladies that I'd like to recognize this evening exemplify those words in a way that is special to me, and that is that they internalize it and they show it every single day of their lives. We're going to start with the quiet one, Beth Stanford. Beth is one of our literacy assistants on campus.
You can hold. See how special that is?
Beth doesn't know a stranger, nor does she know someone who isn't a friend to her. Anytime you talk with her, you're going to walk away with a smile, whether you're an adult or a child, and you're going to feel better for having met her. And so we are very lucky to have her on our campus. Thank you, Beth. The leader, Laura DeSalle.
We can clap for her, too.
Laura is fourth grade team leader and math science teacher. She's also someone who allows me to come and teach every now and then in the middle of her lessons without any fanfare, so I appreciate that. Laura is the consummate professional who's always trying to better herself. She is someone who's forgotten more about math than any of us will ever remember. She challenges her kids, but she also supports her kids. She will be the first person to stay inside, to stay after school, to come before school, to help a child if they need it, but she will hold them to high standards, and I sincerely appreciate that. Thank you, Laura. The not-so-quiet one, Cynthia Stevens.
I don't know what you mean by that.
Cynthia is our enrichment specialist. She's been a classroom teacher at Rock Prairie as well. Cynthia has a love for learning that is her touchstone. She is curious, she asks questions, and she makes kids think. She makes adults think, too, when she does her puzzles of the week and her pictures of the week, but she is also someone who is just a bright learner and who enthusiastically supports the learning on our campus. And so we're lucky to have Cynthia as well. Thank you.
student groups here tonight. We're going to start off with the College Station FFA-LDE teams. Members of the College Station High School FFA chapter traveled to Sam Houston State University on December 1st to compete in the Texas FFA Leadership Career Development Events. College Station's Ag Issues, Public Relations, and Ag Skills teams qualified for the state competition by finishing first or second in one of the state's 66 competitions and first or second in one of the 12 area competitions. And unlike UIL competitions, FFA students compete against schools from all sizes from around the state. The Ag Issues team placed fifth in the preliminary round, advancing them to the final round, where they placed 10th overall in the state. The Ag Skills team placed ninth in the preliminary round, and the Public Relations team placed 11th in the preliminary round. The Texas FFA is the nation's largest state FFA association with a membership of more than 156,000 active members. FFA programs teach skills in leadership, career development, and personal growth, and FFA gives students the opportunity to practically apply classroom knowledge to real-world experiences through local, state, and national competitions. Students, when I call your name, if you'll come up over here to Dr. Harkrider and receive your certificate and then make your rounds to the board members so they can congratulate you, and if you'll step over here to the side next to this table, we'll take a group photo when we're all done. All right? So we'll start with the Ag Issues team: Laney Bone. And Brynlee Wilson. There's one more team member from this team. Isabella Bromwell wasn't able to make it tonight. Let's give her a round of applause as well. All right, for the Ag Skills team, Garrison Fortner. Emily Kasowski. Brady Lambert. And one more team member who wasn't able to make it, Kyler Went. All right, and lastly, from the Public Relations team, I believe we have one member here represented, it's Caitlin Reese. And our other members of the Public Relations team: Leila Aguilar, Laney Cass, Carly Jo Janik, and Caroline Kirby. Let's give them a hand as well. And these students are advised by Aaron Stutz and Jordan Roberts. Aaron, if you want to, we got a certificate for you, too, Aaron. All right, our second group is also from College Station High School. This is Theater Troop 8902. Seven members of the College Station High School Theater Troop 8902 qualified for the International Thespian Festival after competing in the Texas Thespian State Festival on November 17th. In addition, the troupe was named an All-Star Troop for the third year in a row. Students, same thing as with FFA, if you'll come get your certificate over here from Dr. Harkrider and then make your rounds to the board, step over here, we'll take a picture when we're done. All right, first, Carter Chris for short film and duet acting. Nick Gavendova for solo musical. Ellie Hi for solo musical. Emma West for solo musical. And Savannah Tuttle for hair and makeup design. All right, and then we've got two other members who weren't able to make it. Ellie Scow for solo musical and Matthew Richards for duet acting. Let's give them a hand. And then their teachers are Stacy Erskine and Larry Robinson. Let's give them a hand. We got a certificate for you guys as well.
All right, that'll bring us to item C4. We'd like to recognize the artwork at the back of the boardroom from the kids at Greens Prairie and Rock Prairie Elementarys. Make sure y'all check those out. Very talented kiddos we have. And bringing aside item D1: Board Reports. Who would like to start? I can start because Dr. Payne's not here. I'll speak for Education Foundation. There's just not a whole lot going on right now for it, so there's really not much to talk about. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Simmons.
So Jeff has done us the favor this year, and he is not cooking till all others win this year. So our big event, 50 Men Who Can Cook, is coming up next Friday at the Expo. We are all digital, so go online to buy your tickets if you haven't. You can also view the auction and raffle items and all that good stuff. So we'd love to see as many of y'all there. It's always a fun event. Also, Chrissy's Closet is another item that we talked about at our last board meeting. We are seeing increased visits at Chrissy's Closet. So you can always go to their Amazon wishlist on the website, but we did have a very successful clothing drive yesterday. And moving forward, there will be donation bins in the elementary schools because there's always a need for children's clothing. And that Amazon wishlist is also on the website if you go to the Education Foundation website.
And 50 Men is next Friday, February 2nd. You cannot get tickets at the door, so you got to get them in advance. So if you are coming, and we will see if we have ice again this year like we did. So we'll see. No, it's always more fun then. No, yeah, that's the other thing, so.
We probably should mention that Dr. Harkrider's cooking.
Yes, Dr. Harkrider and Mr. Dunson are also cooking.
You guys, your definition of cooking and our booth do not align. We will be there.
So if you want to come see the special recipe they have, make sure you make your way out.
Take you back many years, I can promise you that.
D I C, Laney and I went on January 10th, and really just two items on the agenda. The first was about the calendar, to vote, to see the survey results on the calendar and then to vote on it, which we will all see here in just a minute. And then the other one was, we had three really wonderful presentations from different directors, the Fine Arts, Athletics, and CTE. They each did a nice summary of their programs. And one of those we saw in even more depth this afternoon at the workshop when we saw the Fine Arts update. So always wonderful to see all those exciting things happening from those groups. Oh, and I guess intergovernmental relations was canceled because it's on the same day that our board was, and I think they're just going to skip, and we'll meet next month.
So I can speak for Head Start Policy Council. We met earlier this month, and from a business perspective, the council approved a budget that is in our consent agenda tonight that covers next school year. But just as a new person on that council, it's been interesting to, you know, just hear from parents about the ways that those programs are impacting their kids at each meeting. And so just a great job to the people who make those programs happen. And they're really excited, the council is, about this Family Culture Night that they have planned for this year. That's going to be on May 2nd.
Anything else? All right, that will bring us to Superintendent Update, Dr. Harkrider.
Yes, sir. You know it's baseball and softball season when it gets cold out, and it gets very wet. As a former baseball coach, I've missed many, many, many days, and I hated cold weather. And I always, I think probably two years out of my eight years that I coached, that I had good weather up until that point. So for our young men and women out there and for our soccer teams, they love to play in it evidently. So otherwise, that's why I did not play soccer. I didn't win any part of that. So a lot of stuff going on, a lot of activities. We do have a musical starting this weekend, tomorrow night, no, Thursday night, it opens up, Rock of Ages at College Station High School. I had the opportunity to go to Consol's Musical last week. I am not a fine arts person. I'm an athlete, but the job that they do is very cool to watch. My daughter and I got to go on a date. She is a freshman in high school, probably maybe the last date we have, but we had a great time at Consol's Musical. Looking forward to College Station High's on Thursday night. Lots going on from athletics, fine arts, academic, this, the spring. Every year when this fall gets going, we think we're busy, and then the spring hits, and it's just like, what's going on? There's a lot of stuff going on, a lot of great things happening. I get the opportunity tomorrow to speak at the Bryan College Station Economic Outlook Conference and get to talk about our school district for 15 minutes. So very excited about that. It's a huge event in the area. About 500 or 600 people of our business community will be there, so looking forward to that opportunity to hear the economic outlook forecast for Bryan College Station over the next year, and more importantly, get to showcase the great things that our kids and staff members are doing here in College Station. Tomorrow night also is our second meeting of our Long Range Facilities and Bond Committee. They met last week and went through data points on our last bond election and had some discussions about long-term planning and what that may look like on future bonds. We'll have a meeting again tomorrow night, a possible third meeting, and then they'll make a decision as a committee whether there'll be a recommendation to the board in February for a potential bond election in May of '24. And then last but not least, this weekend, starting on Sunday through next Wednesday, myself and several members of our leadership team will attend the TASA Midwinter Conference in Austin. It is the largest school administrator conference in the entire country, and about 99% of the people there are all from Texas. So it's a tremendous learning opportunity for us. I've never went to that conference. I've been for the last 12 years, I believe, I've never come home without learning something and bringing something back to enhance our district. So looking forward to being there and just staying busy this spring.
All right, that'll bring us to item E. Oh.
Jeff's trying to skip that one. I'm going to drag this out, just for him. So January is Board Recognition Month, and we're excited to celebrate our trustees for their dedication and commitment to the district and its students. School board members are elected by the community, and we trust them to do what's best for students. This connection between us and the board ensures that board members are accountable to voters, attuned to the needs of their communities, and dedicated to a brighter future for all students. So to the school board tonight, we appreciate your time and effort that you put in to meet the educational needs of our students and empower them to become competent, productive contributors to an ever-changing world. Thank you for working closely with our educators, parents, and community to create and maintain the educational vision we want for our students and ensure the structure that provides a solid foundation for our public school system. Tonight, we express our appreciation to you for being the strong advocates for public education that you are and recognize all of your time and hard work to help lead our district to meet the needs of all students. Please join me in showing your appreciation for the College Station ISD Board of Trustees.
Yes, sir. Board members, it's funny. You have board members that either love this day and are all about the attention, or they don't want any part of it, and they just want the day to go on and do their business. So I'm thrilled. When I applied for this job, I did a lot of research on our board. I've watched, I can't remember how many board meetings, because if you do any research in Google School Boards in Texas, you will see all the different extremes, from drama and chaos to board meetings to very professionally-run, structured, that everybody's on the same
structured, that everybody's on the same page. It stood out to me after watching one board meeting of the alignment of this board, and they are, as advertised, they only care about the success of our students and our staff. And that is, it's not common everywhere. There's a lot of times that board members get, or want to be a part of the board for themselves, and what kind of power I think that it gets them versus what's for the greater whole. And I think that's the exciting part about myself and my family taking on this opportunity was the folks here at this table. They have one employee. That would be me. So they got a hell of a job. They get to hang out with me once a month and get to have all the emails and text messages. But you know, you think about it, they're over a budget that's over $150 million, 14,500 students, 2,000 employees. They don't get paid anything. They volunteer position, and there's not a lot of people that would volunteer to do that work. And it takes men and women like this to help form a successful school district. We are blessed that you represent us in a first-class manner always. And on behalf of our school district, thank you for what you do. We appreciate you. We do have a little gift for you. So this is a hint that you're gonna be taking notes in closed session tonight.
Appreciate it. That, as y'all can tell, I hate this, because I don't think any of us do this for the notoriety or the glamour, or whatever you want to call it. I mean, it's just something that we were each called to for some reason. For whatever reason that is, we hope we're doing a dang good job. And we continue to take into consideration that we have it pretty good here in College Station ISD. And we see that when we go out on the road to Tasby Conferences or talk to different folks in different districts. Our people is why we are so good. And so it makes it easy for us to sit up here and stand up here as representations of the community, of the district, whatever that looks like, and be able to, in a sense, kind of beat our chests and know what we have behind the scenes. Because we get to be the figurehead at the school board conference and say, yeah, we are pretty good. And everybody knows that. And, oh, y'all are College Station. And it's a good feeling. But everybody has worked hard to get us to that point, and so we thank all of y'all, as far as employees, staff, students, teachers, all y'all. It's not worth being up here if y'all aren't doing what you're doing. So we appreciate that. All right, we're gonna go on to number E.
I told you. We are fortunate to have some very talented students here tonight to perform as a part of our school board appreciation night. We've got Brayden Kisman and Ellie Hi from College Station High School that are gonna be performing a number from the upcoming musical. Like Dr. Harkrider said, they've got opening this Thursday, running through Saturday. It's called Rock of Ages, Teen Edition, and the song that they are performing tonight is "High Enough."
Nothing like bringing me back to eighth grade. That's awesome. That's awesome.
Are you saying you sang that well?
Oh, man. I jammed that. That is awesome.
And the whole musicals will get you, the whole thing.
I'm not even gonna get a seat. I'm just gonna stand in the back and dance. Thank y'all very much. That was fantastic. Brings us to item E, Hearing Citizens. Do we have anything? Nothing? Okay. Brings us to item F, Consent Agenda. Those items are G, I-5, J-4, J-5, J-6. Just call it J-7 through J-11. That's it.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Ben, second by Mr. Decker. Any questions, concerns? All those in favor say aye? All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. Brings us to item H, H1, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Action Regarding the 2425 College Station ISD School Calendar. And here we go. Ms. Parkerson.
Good evening, Dr. Harkrider, Mr. Horak, and members of the board. As you know, we began the academic calendar development process with the District Education Improvement Council, really back in September, although we officially started our discussions in October. This team takes this process incredibly seriously. There is a lot of discussion and thought and prioritization that goes into developing these calendars. Back in December, I shared with you the two examples that we put forward for consideration by the community. And we're here tonight to share with you the results of that survey, as well as the recommendation put forward from the DEIC. The calendar survey was posted prior to the winter holiday and was closed on Friday, January 5th. We sent an email out to all of our CSISD families, as well as had several postings on social media on December 13th. And I was really excited to see the traction this year that we had with our calendar being shared throughout social media and even being picked up by some of our media outlets. And so we're very thankful for them for sharing that. We also posted an internal reminder in our CSISD Schoology course. Remember, that is our learning management system. And so that reminder notice went out to all of our students and families. And we also communicated through announcements with our middle and high school students that they had an opportunity to participate in this survey. This feedback was disaggregated and then shared at our January 10th DEIC meeting. And we would like to share with you how our participation in the survey has grown over the last several years. So back in '22, '23, you see that we had 2,707 survey participants. We are up to 4,215 folks in our community who participated this year. And so we're excited to see that continued growth. It should be noted that those participants are those who not only examined the survey, but also took the time to vote. And so we actually had a couple of hundred more folks who I would describe as auditing the survey. They examined it. They may have left a comment for us, which we included in all of our comments when we were looking and studying those to look for patterns. And we're also very pleased that in the last couple of years, we have seen growth, continued growth in our student participation in the survey. So of those 4,215 folks who chose to vote for either option A or B, they fell into the categories that are here presented before you. It should be noted that, for example, when I took the survey, I am both a parent and an other CSISD staff member. So people can be represented in multiple categories. So adding this up, it will not equal 4,215. So you'll see we had a wide variety of participation, primarily parents. But also, we do have some community members who do not have students or ties to the district who do participate as well. So when we look at our parents, you can see on this screen how the demographic breaks down as far as what levels of students they have. You'll see that there was a clear preference across parent groups that of all parents, of students of all ages, for Calendar B. And you'll see that mirrored in our smaller group of constituents and the community members who also showed that preference for Option B. When we look at our teachers, you'll see that we have a slight preference for Option A whenever we look at the calendars. And then in other school staff, there was that preference for Option B again. We read through all of the written comments that are in there. And so I will say that from reading that feedback from parents, whenever they are looking at providing childcare for their children, having breaks that are clustered together, such as in Calendar B where we have the longer fall break, if you will, for students, that's easier for them to plan for. And that was a common theme I saw over and over again from parents. Teachers, in contrast, the comments there are really looking more for intermittent breaks. Option A had a holiday in November, an additional holiday in February instead of professional learning. And so I think that's the distinction. But I think it should be noted that in both groups, it was closer this year than it has been in other years as far as expressing a preference for one way or another. And I think that's because by and large, both calendars, we ended up putting forward are very similar to one another, with that exception of the October timing and break. When we look at our students, they also expressed preference for Option B. And interestingly enough, their comments match their parents. If we're going to have some days off, we'd like them to be in a row so that we can go, you know, take a real break together as a family. And when you look at the results of all stakeholders, we see that 56.42% did prefer Option B. So Option B does include the two staff development days in October that are back-to-back, as well as a holiday for staff on October 14th. And so that is a little bit different from past years, that staff get a day off, but also that professional learning. We will leave for the December holiday break on Thursday, the 19th. Both calendars had our return for staff on January 5th. February 17th in this calendar is a staff development day. I believe in Option A, that was a holiday. So that was one of the key differences in those two calendars. We have a total of four professional learning or staff development days embedded during the school year, and 172 instructional days for our students, which leaves us with about a five-and-a-half-day buffer for inclement weather or unforeseen circumstances to make sure that we are able to not have to make up time unless we go past that buffer that we have embedded in our calendar. So at our DEIC meeting, two weeks ago now, the committee chose to recommend putting forward Calendar B for our school calendar for 2024-25. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or hear any comments that you have regarding the calendars.
I'm gonna ask a question or comment, really, but I do think there's a lot of good discussion in DEIC, and obviously a lot of work that goes into it, as well as the surveys that are very helpful. One thing I didn't necessarily hear in DEIC, at least with my group, but I wonder if y'all discuss it, is that clear distinction this year between teachers and parents, right? I mean, luckily, they're not too, too far off, but, you know, clear distinction there. But we have three times as many parents than we have teachers. So, I mean, is there ever a discussion on, you know, and I'm not saying I have a firm answer, but should we consider more the educational or teacher input a little more weighted proportionally than over the parents? Maybe. At least, I don't know, was it discussed at all?
I would say if the calendars were distinctly different, and we felt like one was more inclined for instructional help and support and time for teachers, then I think at that point in time, yeah, I think we would have to give a little bit more credence to it. With these two being almost identical, minus a couple of days, I think teachers are fine with it because it's such a similar calendar. If we ever researched something that, let's say, just for instance, I'm not making this calendar up, so don't put me on Facebook. But if we discussed and looked at, teachers always, we need time, right? We need time, and what do we do with time? If you built in additional early release days for students to go home and teachers to have time sporadically throughout the year, that two-hour window once in six weeks or something, if we explored opportunities like that, you're probably gonna get a distinct difference. You're gonna get teachers that want that because of time, and you're gonna get parents not want that as much because it kind of hurts a little bit with childcare. I've done that in another district. We tried to strategically use Fridays because a lot of times with our families, they're a little bit more flexible on their schedules with that. But I think that's something that we could get feedback on moving into next year of if they were gonna make any changes that we don't really impact the start of school and the last day of school, what would that look like? Because we have about five days, give or take, I think, built into this calendar. So a few hours here and there, we're still have some bad weather days built in that we wouldn't have to make up.
I will say that we did have a calendar, the two choices put forward last year were exactly what you described, Dr. Harkrider, and there was a distinct difference in opinions. And actually, teachers were very much not for having those early release days, that they would rather have the full holidays and whatnot as well. And so...
Well, and we did that one eight, 10 years ago, and it was not really well-received from the parents because of having to get that childcare. So, yeah, that particular one. So...
I'd say an observation I had doing DEIC for the viewing public. First, I appreciate both y'all's focus. Every time y'all talk, Ms. Parkerson, about focus on the instructional days, how do we get the best out of our students? And that was the focus. And I think even the teachers admitted, like, yeah, they would prefer A because just from work hygiene, not getting burnt out. But they all, a lot of the teachers point out for everything from, you know, separate families with child sharing arrangements, with A and M and work schedules. So I really think it speaks a lot to professionalism of our teachers, realizing they are public servants, and then making accommodation. So I didn't hear any teachers that couldn't do Calendar B. It's just, obviously, as humans, we'd prefer Calendar A.
Anything else? All right. Anybody?
Move to accept Calendar B.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Mr. Decker, second by Ms. McAdams. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Ms. Parkerson. That brings us to item I-1, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Action Regarding An Amendment to the 2324 Compensation Plan to Include a Resignation Incentive for Eligible Staff Using SRR3 Funds. Mr. Simak.
Mr. Horak, Dr. Harkrider, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. You may recall that last year, we adopted a similar amendment to our compensation plan, and it really helped us and our campus principals plan for the future. So it's no secret, the trend continues across the state of Texas, that we have less and less applicants in candidate polls each and every year. So the earlier that we can get to the job market, specifically here in the Brazos Valley, the more of an opportunity it gives us or provides us, our campus principals and our directors and department leaders to find available staff. Last year, for your knowledge, we had 80 people that qualified for this incentive. We spent $40,000, which is the exact number that Ms. Draws allotted for this project last year. We didn't go a penny over because she gave me the look, and she pointed the finger at me. So we made sure that we stayed on budget last year. She has been so gracious and kind this year. She has found additional SRR3 money that is available to us so we could again provide this incentive. I will tell you that last year, it was huge for our campus principals and planning. It took away a lot of the surprises, people that are kind of on the fence, mulling whether they're going to retire, whether they're going to hang it up at the end of the year. or whether they're going to hang it up at the end of the year. That $500, while it may not seem like very much, they're not going to leave it on the table. And so it really gave us the opportunity. We came back after spring break and had 80 professional resignations in hand, and were able to start posting those jobs and interviewing as quickly as possible. And whenever you're competing with other schools within the Brazos Valley and across the state, and for such a shallow pool, we want to make sure that we're at the market before everybody else. So with that today, unless you have any questions, I recommend that the board adopt the amendment to the 2023-2024 Compensation Plan.
Move to accept as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Decker, a second by Ms. Simmons. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
I, two, consideration, discussion, and possible action of an amendment to policy CV local. Ms. Drawls.
Thank you, Mr. Horak, members of the board. So tonight, I bring forth to you a possible amendment for policy CV local. That is a facilities construction policy. That policy dictates how we go about securing pricing for any construction projects. One of the requirements within that policy is if the district is not going to use competitive bidding, that the Board of Trustees must authorize the procurement or purchasing method or contract method that would be the best value for the district. Sometimes that's time-consuming in that we can't even advertise for pricing on the project until that's done. So what we have found is that for most projects, the best value for College Station ISD has been either the competitive seal proposal or job order contracting. So based on that, in order to expedite the process of getting pricing on these types of projects, it's administration's recommendation that that policy be amended to state that the board authorizes either competitive seal proposal or job order contracting as the best value. And if there is any other method that would be a better option for us, then that would have to come before the board for approval. So that red line version of the policy is attached for you, and I ask for your consideration tonight.
Move to accept as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Decker, second by Ms. Ege. Any further comments, questions? No? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. That will bring us to item I, three, recommendation for Spring Creek Elementary Principal, Dr. Harkrider.
Yes, sir. At this time, we're excited to recommend Ms. Mindy Chapa as the next principal of Spring Creek Elementary. Mindy has been at Spring Creek for the last six years. The district has done a great job with our aspiring leadership academies and other opportunities to grow our own leaders. I think she checks all those boxes. She was very well advertised when I got here. I've seen her actually work with our aspiring leadership group that we have this year, as well as Brittany Kane. We went over this afternoon and had a staff meeting to make them aware, and Stormy announced that we would be recommending her tonight. They were so loud, it scared me a little bit because I had just dropped my head for a second, and I would have swore somebody scored a touchdown. But the staff was excited. We're excited to be able to promote one of our own leaders into that seat. We think she'll continue the great tradition at Spring Creek and continue the continuity of success that they have there. And so we're looking forward to her leading that campus. So that's my recommendation.
Move to accept the recommendation as presented.
The newbies, y'all can.
I will second.
We have a motion by Mr. Ben, second by Ms. McAdams. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero. Congratulations, Ms. Chapa. Do you have your speech prepared? Would you? Yeah? No? Please, we'd like you to say a few words. All right. That brings us to item I, four, consider approval of a resolution for payment of employees for a missed workday and missed hours due to the closure of the district related to the inclement weather on January 16 through 17, 2024. Mr. Simak.
Yes, sir, Mr. Horak, Dr. Harkrider. As you well know, last week, we had inclement weather, although it seems like we're gonna float away today. The inclement weather was last week. And so January 16, Tuesday, the district was closed, and we had a delayed start of two hours on January 17. In the past, it has been our practice to wait until the end of the year to adopt a resolution such as the one we're presenting tonight. But we would like to provide more clarity for our staff. We have enough instructional time built into our work and school calendars that we don't have to make these days up, which is why we would recommend adopting this resolution so that way our employees understand that we, A, don't have to make these days up, and two, that they will be compensated for these days so they can plan accordingly and, you know, take it as it comes. And we don't have to, just again, provide them with more clarity as to what we're going to do as a district. So unless you have any questions, I would recommend that we adopt the resolution for payment of employees.
I just ask one quick question. Like, if we didn't do this, the pay might actually be later on a different paycheck? Or is?
So I can get that information for you.
I was just curious.
That's a payroll question. So what it led to last year was people constantly calling in the human resources, asking the question, are we gonna have to make those days up? Are we gonna have to make those days up? Lots of emails, lots of questions related to that, phone calls and things of that nature. So it just, it kind of hinges into balance. People know if we're gonna have to make those days up. So Ms. Drawls might be able to tell me in regards to payroll, if that would be a situation where they had to wait on payment. We just want to be able to provide clarity for them right now.
So there's actually a number of ways you can do that since we don't have to make it up without this resolution. Normally, what we would have done was paid them so that they didn't have a short check. But if at some point, a Board of Trustees did not authorize it, then we would have to take that pay back in some form or fashion. We might split it up over to paychecks or something to ease the burden. But Mr. Simak is correct. You know, when we wait till the end of the year, there's always that question in the back of their mind, am I going to have to work another day at some point or pay this back? And this makes it very clear for them.
Thank you both for your explanation.
I realize that it's very, very unlikely. But, you know, worst-case scenario, if, how does this get handled if we do have a situation, we need to make up instructional days?
If we had to come back and make up instructional minutes? Obviously, there's waivers that can be granted by TEA and things of that nature. So obviously, would require more inclement weather, hopefully. Knock on wood, that's not going to happen to us here in CSISD. But if it would, we would have to wait and see what TEA's advisement was, if they were gonna require a makeup day. Otherwise, then we might have to look at potentially scheduling makeup time at the end of a calendar. But that hasn't happened in College Station ISD in a long time. And hopefully, we won't have any additional inclement weather that's going to keep us out of school.
We'd have to come to you guys to adjust the calendar. The state's kind of made it very clear, unless this is a widespread issue such as a hurricane or something that affected a large population, they've made it pretty clear recently that they would make us make up the minutes, that that would be our problem to figure that out. So if we got into that situation and went over four and a half days or whatever we have left, we would have to adjust our calendar. A lot of folks have adjusted their calendar by adjusting, instead of trying to come on a Saturday or whatever with the staff, you adjust your minutes. So maybe go 30 minutes longer per day, an hour longer, or whatever, for a set amount of time to make up that time.
And Dr. Harkrider, Ms. Parkinson, just reminded me that we have eight and a half days built into this calendar. So we still have some wiggle room as far as instructional minutes are concerned.
Nobody asked for more ice, please. Please, no more ice.
I'd move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ben, second by Mr. Decker. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. That'll bring us to J, one. Consider approval of the change of funding for prior contract award for security vestibules to Spal Glass in the amount of $818,000 from 21 bond funds to the 2325 School Safety and Facilities Enhancement Grant. Ms. Drawls.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. So in October of this school year, October 2023, College Station ISD was notified of over $4.8 million in safety and facilities grant funds that had been allocated to us. In December, we submitted the application for that grant. Now, a unique thing about this grant is, first of all, it must be spent on the things to get us in compliance with the safety recommendations that were made last year. But we can also go back as far as June of 2022 and pick up expenditures in this grant. So that's what this request actually does. In November of 2022, you, as a Board of Trustees, approved a contract to Spal Glass in the amount of $818,000 for the security vestibule enhancements for elementary schools and our intermediate schools. So if you so authorize the change of funding tonight from the 2021 bond funds to the safety grant, we will reclassify that expenditure and reimburse the bond funds, allowing us some additional funds there, which are much needed for inflation and some other things. And we can do additional safety things if needed from there, so.
Move to accept as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Decker, second by Ms. McAdams. Any further questions?
I do have a comment. I just want, again, for the viewing public, what Ms. Drawls has said about us using this, this creative funding so we can recoup some of the bond funds. I just hope the public realizes how, and I'm appreciative of how good stewards of those bond funds are, and we'll find all the efficiencies to squeeze every last dollar out of that. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I'll just follow up. Also, thank you for going to the trouble to actually write the grants because it was not an automatic thing, right? Somebody, did somebody have to?
It wasn't an automatic allocation, but we did have to submit the application.
You had to submit.
Yeah, it was not competitive, but we did have to submit it.
Okay, great.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero. J, two, consider approval of the change of funding for a prior contract award for security vestibules to Vaughan Construction, the amount of $510,000 from the Adam Family Foundation Safety and Security Donation Fund to the 2325 School Safety and Facilities Enhancement Grant.
Thank you. Similar to the last item, this would go back, if you so approve the change of funding from, but this time, it's the Adam Family Foundation grant. This was $510,000 of Vaughan Construction. And we were going, because of, we were running out of bond funds we had allocated for safety, we were going to use the Adam Family Foundation funds for this grant. $510,000, this was for the secondary security vestibules. So if approved tonight, then we'll be able to reallocate those funds as well, which are a lot more flexible for safety than the grant is. So it's gonna help us out.
A move that we approve as presented. I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Ege, second by Ms. Simmons. Any further questions, discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero. And that will bring us to J, three. Consider authorizing the superintendent authority for purchases over $50,000 for two used tractor-trailer trucks in an amount not to exceed a total of $230,000 from the 23 bond funds. Ms. Drawls.
Thank you. So as part of the planning in the 2023 bond funds, we have monies allocated to the Fine Arts Program to replace two tractor-trailer trucks. We are looking for used ones. You can imagine, there's not that many of those vehicles just sitting around on lots. So Hector Silva, our Director of Transportation, has sought out some used ones. But what we're finding is if we locate one, we want to first check out mechanically. But then we have to act quickly because those dealers are not going to hold them for the next board meeting. So unlike normal, when I would be asking you for approval to purchase, what we're recommending is that you authorize the superintendent up to $230,000. We feel like that will be ample for some used ones that are in very good condition. So that if we find them, even if we do need to go through the procurement process, we can do the minimum two-week advertising and move on it quickly and secure those assets for the district.
It's 230 total, not each, right?
Yes, 230 total. It gives us a little flexibility if one's more or one's less.
Move to accept as presented.
Motion by Mr. Decker, second by Mr. Ben. Any further questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero. That jumps us all the way to K, one. Consider authorizing the superintendent to enter into final negotiations and contract with VLK Architects for the architectural services related to the district's middle school playing field project and construction. Ms. Drawls.
Yes. So discussions on policy CV. Again, a CV also requires that an architect or engineer be assigned to every construction project if it's over $50,000. That architect is selected based on their demonstrated competence and qualifications. So you can do a request for qualifications, but it's not required.
Any further questions?
Not that I have any concerns about VLK, but how often are we gonna go, do we go through the RFQ process?
You know, the last time was February 2021. So we're only looking at this particular project at this time. So we need to make some decisions on future projects within that bond, if that is a need to do that, or if it is not. So we'll talk about that in the next couple of weeks, probably.
Okay.
I'll wait till the next one for my question because it's on K, two. Any other question? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero. Brings us to K, two. Consider approval of the procurement method of competitive sealed proposal for district's middle school playing field project. Ms. Drawls.
Yes. So for the middle school projects, it's our recommendation that the best procurement method or the best value for College Station ISD for this project would be competitive sealed proposals. We would actually probably break this up into two different phases, one being the actual turf itself, and then the other being the building and the grandstands. But competitive sealed proposal, if you'll recall earlier in this meeting, there was an amendment to that policy that would have allowed us to proceed with competitive sealed proposal without bringing this to you. But we have this on the agenda tonight as competitive sealed proposal.
Just to clarify, if you actually break it into two projects, they will be, have separate CSPs on them?
Yes, separate, separate numbers.
What is the goal as far as start date for this?
So we actually met today to discuss with our middle school principals, as well as athletics, the best time. Because, you know, one thing that I learned through this process is it takes a lot longer to do that turf when you're starting with natural grass rather than relaying it. So we talked about what is the best time for those campuses to be without that playing field for about a period of four months. So we'll be going through the timeline with VLK with that. And they were actually talking about potentially, maybe November or December. about potentially maybe November or December after football season for them, and that, because those are the cold months, they probably, for PE, can do some alternate things, but we would have to work with VLK to make sure we can get all of that secured. So right now, that's the timeline we're working for.
Any other question? Motion by Mr. Decker, second by Ms. Iggy. Further questions? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Brings us to K three. Consider authorizing the superintendent to enter into final negotiations on CSP 24-004 with Rava Construction LLC for Phase Three renovations to any consolidated high school in the amount of $3.6 million utilizing 21 bond funds. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Dr. Harkrider, Mr. Horak, members of the board. I'll have two projects to bring forth for your consideration this evening for the 21 bond package. This one in particular is, of course, for A&amp;M Consolidated High School, Phase Three renovations. I would like to start off, before I get into the details of that, by saying thank you to the voters of College Station ISD for passing a bond issue for $78.125 million back in November 21 to make this funding available for such projects. So this project for A&amp;M Consolidated High School is a multi-phase renovations project. Over the last two summers, we've already accomplished Phase One and Phase Two, and this Phase Three project would be happening in the summer of '24. It's a continuation of those efforts. General scope of the renovations work is to replace the finishes, such as flooring, paint, cabinets, tile, and restroom fixtures throughout the campus, as well as replacing the existing light fixtures with LED light fixtures for this area. This particular phase will be addressing the central core of the building and the remaining second floor areas that we didn't accomplish last year. Altogether, it's about 111,000 square foot worth of work at Kentsal High School. This project is being processed as a competitive sealed proposal project, which means it was advertised as required by statute and proposed, proposal packages were opened on January 4th, 2024. Proposals were received that day from Dudley Construction, Merrick Brothers Construction, and Rava Construction. The evaluation team consisted of myself, Assistant Director of Facilities Rene Ramirez, Construction Coordinator Tom Stewart, and VLK Project Architect Lynn Rabatsky. The proposals were reviewed and scored that same afternoon, and I have attached VLK's letter of recommendation, their proposal tabulation sheet, and the proposal scoring sheet for reference. Rava Construction received the highest overall score and is the recommendation of the committee. Rava Construction has successfully accomplished several difficult summer renovations projects for us over the years, and for this reason, they were able to pick up just a few extra points in criteria three, four, and five of the scoring sheet. They have an excellent record of completing these projects on time and start for school, and once again, this project would be accomplished the summer of '24. So it's recommended that the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees consider approval of award of RFCSP 24-004 for the A&amp;M Consolidated High School renovations' Phase Three project to Rava Construction in the amount of $3,600,000 utilizing 2021 bond funds. And with that, I'd love to answer any questions.
Was, in regard to the recent leaks on the roof at Kentsal, was Rava, was that a project of Rava, or was that a different construction company?
Roof repair is not included in this particular. This is just for the interior. We do have, we're chasing separately roof repairs for, for the mini leaks we have over Consolidated High School, in particular around the gym area. So that'll be coming very soon.
Who's the contractor on?
For the roofing? I don't know. It's been so many years on.
Okay, so this wasn't more recent, where the?
No, no. What we're experiencing leaks right now is over the athletics wing of the building, that roof has been in place for, I'll say, 12 years plus.
Thank you.
The 2023 bond that was just passed by taxpayers, part of the money earmarked there for upgrades and things to facilities would be a complete roof job at Kentsal.
And there, just a comment, I mean, I think to your, I think this is an example of where it is good to continue VLK, because there has been so many years of work specifically at Kentsal, right? This is a four-year project from 2021 bond, and then there will be a different, additional from the new bond. That said, is, again, at least for this specific project. That said, do you know, and were there any changes to, like, Phase Three and Phase Four based on now that we, to integrate better or differently with the 2023?
There were, for sure. We were considering moving into, like, the fine arts wing and the Kate areas just a little bit more. Had the 23 bond not passed, we would have been a little more aggressive on this one. But since it did pass, we held back on those areas. We're going to be kind of having combo projects. There'll be 21 bond and 23 bond projects of funding for these areas, and that'll allow us to reconsider spatial requirements. We might be tearing out a few more walls, doing a little more, bigger renovation instead of just finished replacements. Next, well, that would be the summer of '25. We'll be looking at for that work.
Great.
Move to accept as presented?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Decker, second by Mr. Ben. Further questions? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero. And K four, consider authorizing the superintendent to enter into final negotiations on CSP 24-003 with Rava Construction LLC for renovations to Cypress Grove Intermediate in the amount of $3.655 utilizing 2021 bond funds. Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Horak, Dr. Harkrider, members of the board. In a similar fashion, we're on another campus over at Cypress Grove Intermediate School. We plan to renovate the entire building, much like we did Pebble Creek this past summer. So it's not a multi-phase. We're going to, we're going to go all in and do the whole thing in one summer for Cypress Grove. Once again, the general scope of work is replacing the finishes over there, flooring, paint, cabinets, tile, restroom fixtures throughout the campus, as well as a replacement of the existing lighting with LED light fixtures. Again, working with Piper Cameron, we did pick up a couple of little scope ads, but everything worked in very well. And so we're going to be processing this, similar to the other project, as a competitive sealed proposal project. It was advertised as required by statute, and proposal packages were opened on December 14th, 2023, just before the Christmas break. They were received that day from Dudley Construction, M. Scott Construction, Merrick Brothers Construction, ABA Services, and Rava Construction. So we had a little better coverage on this project. Evaluation team consisted of myself, Assistant Director of Facilities Rene Ramirez, Director of Purchasing Carmela Schaefer, Construction Coordinator Tom Stewart, VLK Architect Melissa Fleming, and VLK Project Architect Sydney McMackin. The proposals were reviewed and scored that same afternoon, and once again, I've attached the recommendation letter, proposal bid tab sheet, and proposal scoring sheet for your reference. Rava Construction received the highest overall score and is the recommendation of this committee. Once again, they've successfully accomplished many of these difficult projects for us. They've got a great team. We know they're, they're the big hitters for us, and they scored, scored out the highest on this particular project as well. So it is recommended that the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees consider approval of award of RFCSP 24-003 for renovations to Cypress Grove Intermediate School to Rava Construction in the amount of $3,655,000 utilizing 2021 bond funds. And I'll turn it over to questions or comments.
I move that we approve as presented.
A second.
Motion by Ms. Iggy, second by Ms. Simmons. Any further? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Bring this item L one. The board will meet in executive session to discuss superintendent mid-year review. The executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the personnel matters closed meeting, exception to the Texas Open Meetings Act as set forth in Section 551.074 Texas Government Code. Appreciate y'all being here. Safe travels in the weather, and we'll see y'all next Friday at 50 Men Who Can Cook. Brings us back to open, oh, do I need to wait on Ezra?
He just ran back.
Good? Okay. Item M, back to open session. Item N, adjournment. Thank y'all for being here.